Recording in progress.
Uh, the city of Rockaway Beach City Council Workshop on Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, at 4:30 PM will come to order. Uh, let's record who's in attendance. Uh, Council President Cheek.
President.
Counselor Conrad.
Here.
Counselor Martine.
Here.
Counselor McGinnis.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Mayor McNeely is present. Workshops are intended to allow for preliminary discussions by the city council staff. Workshops are held to present information to the council so that the council is prepared for upcoming regular meetings. Workshops are subject to Oregon's public meeting law and must be noticed accordingly. No final city council decisions are made during workshops. The public is encouraged to attend workshops but may not participate unless expressly asked. Um, our city charter authorizes the mayor to determine the order of business. As such, I am moving the strategic plan progress update before the review of wayside use applications. Uh, with this, we'll open with the FEMA Pickham Flood Hazard Overlay Zone Ordinance Comprehensive Plan Proposed Amendments Discussion. We have Armand from the Local Government Law Group and Planner Tapia here to, uh, take the lead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna give, uh, my presentation is gonna be focused, uh, on providing some, uh, background as to the FEMA, uh, Pickham or one of why are we looking at zoning ordinance changes and comprehensive plan amendments? I'm gonna provide, uh, some background that'll be helpful for decision-making during the hearing. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, local impacts, uh, some of the local impacts of, of the, the Pickham, uh, as well as provide some context of how other jurisdictions responded. Uh, and then I'll pass it on to, to Armand, uh, who is our legal counsel, who can help us, uh, with some, uh, assess the, the legal risk of the different options at hand. Uh, and at that time, I'll answer the questions. So a quick, uh, of, uh, context of what brought us here, uh, in April of 2016, National Marine Fisheries Service released the biological opinion, uh, which is, there's gonna be a lot of acronyms, uh, in, in this presentation and, and this story in general. So, uh, if I'm jumping ahead, please flag me and I will, I will let you know what the acronym stands for. Uh, but the, uh, biological opinion that they released, which is called the FEMA Biop, basically it asked FEMA to adopt, uh, measurements that would, uh, prevent their, their national flood insurance program from, uh, kind of constituting a takings of an endangered species. Uh, so that, uh, information affected several of the communities in Oregon is very Oregon-specific. Uh, we're not alone in, in this process. There are, uh, 227 communities across 31 counties that were affected by the, uh, the Pickham. And so I'm giving a little more context of what those, uh, what the Pickham is, but so FEMA developed a pre-implementation compliance measure, which is what's, uh, Pickham stands for, uh, for participating communities in the National Flood Insurance Program. And they, uh, these were preliminary, uh, measurements to comply with Endangered Species Act requirements that were outlined in the, in the, uh, in the FEMA Biop. Uh, and, and these would be measurements that we've, that were, would put upon cities and counties to fully be in compliance with, with both NEPA and to be eligible for the National Flood Insurance, uh, program. So why is it a, a pre, uh, pre-implementation? Uh, what these are, you know, gearing us up towards is the larger, uh, steps that FEMA are gonna take to be in compliance, uh, which is the, uh, they've gone through environmental impact statement to outline what the impacts are of, of their proposed, um, uh, rules and the context of where we're at in that process. Uh, but recently, the draft, uh, environmental impact statement was available to the public for comment. Uh, that was in August. Uh, and then the, they're reviewing the comments or FEMA's reviewing the comments and they will come back with a final, uh, environmental impact statement, uh, and, and decision as to what course of action they will take, uh, to be in compliance with, uh, Biop. I was, uh, struggling to find an exact day or, or date by when that final EIS will be available, but everything that I've seen says 2027.
So Abram, just so clear, so everything our community might be doing now and other communities, this is all temporary because of the seven.
The, uh, new. Depending on the three Pickhams, that, that those are, it would be temporary until, um, uh, FEMA releases their, their final, um, uh, decision of what the city should do to, to be in compliance.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, so the, the three options that, uh, were put before us and other, other communities, uh, by FEMA, uh, which are the Pickham options are is adopt the model ordinance, which is what is in front of you or will be in front of you later today, uh, permit by permit evaluation of flood plain permit development, and the, uh, third, prohibition of all development in the special flood hazard area. Uh, something to note is that the, uh, definition that FEMA provides for development is very, very broad. Uh, it includes like, uh, uh, any human, uh, activity. So that goes from, you know, uh, uh, from digging a hole to building a house to, to paving and, and including utilities. Uh, so this potentially has an impact, uh, outside of just areas that are within the special flood hazard area. Um, yeah.
So if I, if I heard correctly, uh, this has implications for public works.
Definitely.
And the work that they might need to do in a special flood hazard.
Yes, the, the, this would, uh, uh, there's, and we'll show a map of, of all the areas impacted, but yes, uh, running utilities to other areas that are not in the special flood hazard area would also be impacted. Um, yeah.
And, uh, what about remodeling? Like someone has a home in the flood area and they want to do some remodeling or build a garage on property they already have there, uh, replace a fence. Is that included?
The, the, the definition of, of development would include that, whether or not that is new development or not new, it goes into different, that, uh, a different assessment of whether or not it's, um, uh, above a, a certain threshold that it would require that to either be provisions in the model ordinance or go through a permit by permit process, uh, or, or, you know, would be prohibited.
I mean, so you're saying like dig a hole so even like putting in like a mailbox?
Yes, yeah. Um, at one, yeah, yeah, yes. Fences, any, any, uh, even storage of, of materials on a lot, uh, wouldn't be considered as development.
Okay.
Uh, so in terms of timelines for, for the Pickham, initially, uh, uh, the timeline was by December 2024, uh, either December, November, uh, FEMA extended that timeline to July and then reextended it to August, uh, 29th. Uh, but to note, currently, the city of Rockaway Beach is not in compliance with the Pickham. So a, a little bit of context, uh, we talked a little bit already about, uh, the model ordinance, but in that, uh, the standards to meet, the, the Pickham is the known at law standard. Uh, and these would be, uh, uh, based on the, in the impact of the development, a calculation is run to, uh, uh, assess what the mitigation steps that the developer would need to fill in order to, uh, compensate for that impact. Um, there, we will go, we can go into depth into the model ordinance if we'd like, but I'm gonna save that for the end for the questions because I also wanna talk about the permit by permit approach, uh, which would require the developer or development application to analyze the potential loss of flood play functions and proposed mitigation that would abide by the standards that, uh, uh, FEMA produced in a, in a form of a guideline. Um, the permit by permit approach puts the onus on, uh, the developer. Uh, Armand will talk about some of the implications of, of that, um, a, as well, but it is, uh, would be a, a, a arduous process to work with each, uh, project through this process.
But I, I, before we get too far past this, when you said the city was not in compliance, it's my understanding since we didn't pass something by August, we automatically fall under by default the model ordinance.
Um, from my understanding, that is not the case. Uh, Armand, would you like to jump in and answer that question?
Sure. So, uh, am I coming through? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, you are technically correct if I recall back in the summer, um, because we had not, uh, or we were gonna go forward with the ordinance, I believe, uh, FEMA had defaulted us to permit by permit review in the interim. And so in their calculation, until you adopt your ordinance, you are supposed to be implementing Pickham by permit by permit. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
I just didn't want the community to think we're not doing anything. Yeah.
All right. And then the third option and, uh, is also having, uh, uh, prohibit development within, uh, like in the special flood hazard area. And again, that, uh, implication development is, uh, it's a, a broad definition. Um, so I wanna talk a little bit about the impacts of, of, uh, of this on Rockaway. Um, compared to a lot, several of the other communities that I ran a quick case study of, we are, uh, we're, we have a larger impact than other, other communities have when, uh, making this decision. So we have, uh, uh, 11% of the land that is zoned as residential is within this, uh, special, uh, flood hazard area. Uh, 23 of those acres are undeveloped. So tho- those are the 23 acres that would be, are, are most constrained by the decision that the city council would make, uh, today and moving forward. But when it comes to commercial, uh, zone land, uh, 29% of the commercially zoned land is within this, uh, uh, flood hazard area and four of those, um, uh, four acres of that is undeveloped. Overall, uh, 27% of Rockaway is in the special flood hazard area. Uh, seven, and that's for both the urban growth boundary and the city limits. Uh, it worked out that they're both 27%. Uh, but then 7% of, of land zoned as residential, commercial within city limits are in the special flood hazard area, uh, meaning that 20% is already either zoned as open space or a special area, wetlands. Uh, so we're really concerned about that 7 or 9%. Um, from a planning perspective, you know, i- if these 23 acres are further constrained, uh, it from Oregon law, we need to figure out a plan to, um, either, you know, expand the UG B to accommodate for that loss or to, uh, uh, implement, uh, other measures to, to increase, um, uh, or, or meet our housing needs. All right, from a, a flood insurance perspective, uh, there are 253 active NFIP policies. Uh, it constitutes a, a large, uh, coverage and for part of our community. Another part to note though is that the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, lapsed in September, uh, leaving homeowners unable to buy new, uh, or to buy new programs or, or policies or renew their existing policies. Um, even though it lapses, cities and, and counties must, uh, enforce their local flooding management regulations. So looking at the response of, of Pickham, I, I looked both south and north to see what different jurisdictions, uh, did. Uh, Tillamook County, uh, responded to, to FEMA saying that in a letter that they weren't gonna pick one of the three options, but rather they were going to, uh, en- enforce the, uh, the Endangered Species Act or, or provide a clause, uh, that the onus is on, uh, the developer to, uh, enforce, uh, the Biop. Um, city of, of Tillamook, oh, sorry, before I continue, uh, I put, uh, the sections, uh, or the entirety of the jurisdiction and the impact that they have, uh, on the right is, uh, the flood, uh, plans for, uh, um, uh, shoot, uh, um, I have a name, but I'll, I'll come back, but, um, for Tillamook County, uh, they have, you know, similar large portions that are in the special flood hazard area. They, uh, followed suit with the county and also responded to FEMA in the form of a letter. Uh, Manzanita, uh, on the other hand, and I had a chance to, to talk quite a bit with their planner, um, they've responded through the, a permit by permit approach. They have very small, uh, I think they mentioned four lots that are in the special flood hazard area. So they're, uh, it's a obviously much different impact. Um. Uh, Bay City, uh, responded by moratorium, but then defaulted to a permit by permit approach. Uh, equally, they, they do have some parts that are in the flood hazard area, but not to the extent that Rockaway does. Uh, Florence, City Florence in, in Lake County, uh, they, uh, attempted to pass the model ordinance but did not adopt it and defaulted to a permit and permit, uh, review. And as you can see also on the map, the very, uh, small areas are in the special flood hazard area. Uh, and then Warrenton, which is, I think, in, in a lot of ways closer to us in, in the impact, uh, they, uh, uh, were similar to what our approach has been. We're gonna adopt a model ordinance, but have yet to adopt it. Uh, and from here, I'm gonna pass it on to Armand to talk a little bit about the, the legal risk of our, of the three Pickhams and, and the potential paths forward.
Great. Thank you, Abram. Uh, thank you, counselors. Good evening. Um, this FEMA Pickham matter can get really easily into the weeds and I wanna try to stay high level, uh, and present you with just the, the necessary information for you to make an informed decision, uh, because the ordinance is, uh, a- at your meeting tonight. So there are a couple of options of how you could proceed. Uh, I know we have limited time too, so I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief, uh, for questions. So Abram did a great job of presenting a general overview of this. Um, I think looking at what other cities are doing is very informative. Um, I think it will calculate into your risk assessment of how to proceed here, uh, what are your sister jurisdictions doing as well? Um, part of the calculation here is we're working with a federal agency that has, um, a lot of questions at a federal level right now. At a local level, uh, there are staffing issues and, um, we haven't yet seen enforcement from the federal agency on this Pickham matter. Not yet. That doesn't mean it's going to happen, not going to happen. Um, but that's, I think, a calculation a lot of jurisdictions are looking at right now. Um, a few points I wanna clarify, uh, and highlight. So to Luke's question, yes, generally, Pickham is, uh, options are temporary in nature. So if you were to do a moratorium, if you were to do a permit by permit review, even if you were to do the model ordinance, all of those are technically temporary because FEMA is going through a formal environmental impact statement process. Out of that process, they will come up with a permanent, ideally, permanent rulemaking that will then impose the formal standard of regulation that a city would have to adopt. Um, the only exception I will say here is that the model ordinance that's before you tonight, the, the, the Pickham model ordinance, that new no net loss standard could be carried over into the final, um, EIS result. So FEMA could retain all of this and say, what you adopted during the Pickham is actually the formal new template for our ordinance. Uh, that's a possibility. Uh, we just don't know right now because they're going through that EIS process. Um, there is ongoing litigation, uh, challenging Pickham, um, and the findings in the biological opinion. That's led by Oregonians for floodplain protection, which many of you may have hea- heard of, heard of or get emails, uh, from. Um, their lawsuit generally challenges the rulemaking process, i.e. there was none, um, and improper NEPA review. Uh, unfortunately, um, while that litigation was relevant and, um, I was very optimistic of the arguments presented that would make Pickham possibly go away. Um, uh, that case has been stayed indefinitely because of the government shutdown. Um, so I don't know if that's gonna get picked up if the government reopens at a federal level. Um, but, but ultimately, I'm not sure we can really rely on that litigation as giving us any indication of how to proceed today. We just know that there's some questions out there about the authority for FEMA to do this. Um, I wanna clarify why our office has not been recommending the other Pickham approaches. Um, the moratorium, which we didn't really talk about, um, is a drastic measure. Uh, I would not recommend that. I'm not sure we could even adopt adequate findings, uh, pursuant to the state statute to demonstrate a need for a complete moratorium on development. Um, and the permit by permit review, in my opinion, in our office's opinion, isn't really legally defensible. Um, FEMA is asking cities to impose a new regulatory no net loss standard without any code amendments, without any new ordinance. They just want cities to do it. And in Oregon, in land use, that's not okay. We, we can't do that. We, we are bound by our development code. Um, and so we just can't require a new standard that the agency is imposing upon us via a policy directive. Uh, if it was a regulation or if it was a formal rule, that's a different story, but we don't have that. We just have a policy decision from, from FEMA's own litigation saying, hey, for us to comply with the ESA city, you need to adopt this new ordinance. Um, so I would be very cautious about exploring and actually doing permit by permit review because, um, it, it puts us at a real, uh, risk from an applicant level. If an applicant comes in and they're getting a criteria or a standard imposed against them that's not under code, that's not really defensible. That, that's gonna be a really hard one to chew. Um, so ultimately, uh, we think the model ordinance is the safest Pickham approach. Um, the question for you tonight and what's been the question these last several months is whether to take that action today. Um, and so I, I'm reconnecting with you here, hopefully to provide you some factors to consider. Um, back in May, I advised the city about the risks here and possibility of, of pausing this process, whether we should take action. The calculation really hasn't changed since May. The litigation hasn't moved along. FEMA really hasn't taken enforcement actions against jurisdictions that I'm aware of. Um, so while we're watching that litigation, uh, we know the agency's understaffed. Um, we know there's a lot of changes at a federal level. Uh, you know, I think the risk from a federal enforcement standpoint is low. That's not nonexistent, right? Um, FEMA does have the authority to potentially suspend a jurisdiction, an NFIP community, uh, from the NFIP. That suspension process is very long. It requires, you know, a 90-day notice, I believe. Um, you have to go through a, uh, notice, a, a reasonable opportunity to cure. And so there's a lot of opportunities within that to even address non-compliance. It's not just this hammer that happens suddenly. Um, so I think the risk is low, but it, it's not nonexistent. Um, and, and having said that, you know, right now, the city is in non-compliance, right? Uh, the deadline for a Pickham ordinance was August 31st. So your decision to continue this and not do it yet, your risk isn't going up. It's just status quo, right? We're, we're, we haven't met their deadline already. Um, and that's a self-imposed deadline by FEMA. Again, that's not a rule. That's not a regulation. That's just their self-imposed deadline for when they want cities to take this action. Um, based on my conversations with other city attorneys, um, and, and others working in this field, uh, cities are, like Rockaway, are, are in all similar positions. Um, there are lots of cities that have taken no action at all, a lot of big jurisdictions. Um, some, uh, you know, as Abram just mentioned, are doing permit by permit review. I would honestly be very curious to hear from their planners what they're actually doing at a practical level because again, I would not advise that we impose a new standard without code amendments. And so I'm wondering what those jurisdictions are doing. I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Um, so many have not taken formal action. They're waiting to see the litigation play out or they're kind of, you know, in the same position you are, this risk is low and we don't wanna amend our code and impose pretty significant new regulatory standards on our homeowners, uh, and our, and our constituents if we don't really need to at this point. Um, so those are some of my thoughts and risks. I'm gonna pause because it's a lot. Um, if you have questions, if you have thoughts or comments here, I know this has been before you in the past, so, um, a- any and everything is welcome.
So, um, Armand, it sounds like if, if the city council decides not to take action tonight, uh, we, we don't even have a date in mind to continue to. There's no date certain. There's nothing that makes sense, no date that makes sense in your mind. Is that, is that right to continue this too?
Yeah, it's a tough question, um, because I believe we've been continuing this since May at least. Does that sound right? Um, you know, there's a, there's another procedural option here and, and I'm gonna have to defer to, to all of you of what you're hearing from your constituents. There's an, there's, there's the option of holding the hearing tonight, of doing the hearing on the ordinance. So take public testimony, hear from the public on it, get their input and their feedback, and then council can decide at the close of that hearing, do we wanna take action on this ordinance to, today, right now? Or do we want to hold off on making a decision and let, defer to staff of when they should bring the ordinance back to us? But you've met your procedural land use step of doing the hearing, of getting public comment and testimony. Now the question is just when do you formally adopt the ordinance? Um, so that's an idea. The city could hold the hearing tonight, but delay formal action on the ordinance. Um, uh, that, that's an option. That's an option.
Okay, um, so a couple of clarifying questions. Um, uh, right now, how are we operating? Are we operating based on our current code and evaluating permit requests based on our current code? We're not doing permit by permit.
Yeah, cur- currently we're operating by, by what is in our zoning ordinance and our companies.
And if we chose to table this, we could continue to do that. It would, it would just stay the same. And I'm getting nods from our planner. So that's, that's good. So the follow-up question is, um, can we just table the whole thing and not do the, the, the hearing tonight?
Absolutely. That's another option. The only downside, um, is that, well, if you don't do the hearing, the decision is what Luke was just asking of whether you can or will continue to a date time certain. If you don't do that, you're gonna have to restart this whole process. You're gonna have to go back to a Measure 56 notice again and send out all those mailings. Right now, you're still operating on your initial notice and you're just continuing the hearing to a future date. So you could table this. You just have to pick a date and time. And, and to Luke's question, I don't really have a good suggestion of when that date and time should be. That's, that's a sort of a policy decision of when do you want to reassess this question?
Well, and that was, what I was getting to is, was, uh, perhaps tabling it until staff determines there, there's something that's taking place that would, would push us to bring this back up.
I, I also have a question about the hearing process, Armand, because I don't think of, a wide section of our community is, is aware of all of these implications and they haven't weighed in. We have a strong environmental group and they pushed the newsletter out to just their small, and, and they have a lot of people in their environmental group. Most of them don't live in Rockaway. And so that one group would come, i- is prepared tonight to come to the hearing and give one viewpoint, but then we have 1,300 other people and businesses in the community who would not, who are not prepared for a hearing. And is there some way the hearing could be held as, in, in continuum with maybe a survey online or something like that where we could get a broader section of what everyone in the community feels?
Um, you know, I think you're getting at, the, the idea being, um, this is, this is one of the reasons I, yeah, that you should be analyzing whether you wanna hold the hearing or not, is whether you think you're gonna get public comment and testimony. Cause I, I guarantee you in Rockaway, there's definitely folks that are interested in commenting on this issue. Um, I, I would suggest, uh, that if, that if you want to go forward with the hearing but still delay action on the ordinance, I would suggest, um, maybe continuing this one more time and then it's on the counselors. Part of your job is outreach to the community of really pushing the, 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 the fact that, hey, our next hearing on this matter, we are actually holding it. Uh, it is actually happening. We want you there. We want you to show up. We want to hear what your thoughts are on it and your input. And, and that to me is the best way to facilitate all of that coming together. Um, because, because yeah, otherwise, um, I, I'm not sure of like a survey option. I'm not sure what that would look like. I'd have to think about that. Um.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
You just, just those counselors.
Well, advertised hearing, yeah.
I, 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 um, uh, I agree with, with Counselor McGinnis. I don't think the community in general is engaged in this particular issue. So, uh, there is no, I, I would be shocked if downstairs, if we hold the hearing, we'll have any folks speaking in support or neutral. We will get a lot of feedback against the ordinances. We will get a lot of feedback against the ordinances. We know that's coming. We've seen the public testimony already. Counselor McGinnis mentioned the group that has, I mean, just been incessantly bombarding the community with this testimony, this public hearing and taking a particular position on the, on the, on the ordinances, which is against us adopting the model ordinance. So if, if what we want is to get a community view of this, that will, I do not believe that will happen tonight. It would, as to your point, Armon, it would be incumbent upon the council, counselors and staff to do some outreach to the community, to educate them, get them interested in it, help them understand the implications and potentially then do another public hearing where we would get a more balanced or complete view from, from the community. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to do the public hearing tonight. If what we really want to do is hear how the community feels about this and about the three options before us. And since we're just operating as we normally operate, I don't see any downside to tabling this to another time after we can do some outreach and education. And this is just an off-the-top thought.
Because there's no decisions that have come down from the feds. We have no idea which way we should actually go. I suppose we could adopt this ordinance and once FEMA made whatever recommendations they made, we could amend that ordinance, but that's a lot of process to go through while we're waiting on their dime.
Well, and I think, Armon, if I understood your use of the word cure, if for some reason, let's just say we table this, we continue to operate under our, our current code, FEMA gets cranky about it, we then, we then could go through the process and adopt the model ordinance before they shut down our flood insurance program.
Yeah. I mean, I haven't faced this issue yet. I'll be honest with that. Like I mentioned, I haven't seen them enforce or suspend a jurisdiction yet. But if they were to take that drastic step, yes, I would essentially, I would, I would be in the position that, well, then at that point, we would move forward with the ordinance and we would try to get into compliance as quickly as possible. And then you can show that compliance. That's what I would do.
Yeah, I'm just concerned. So the environmental, local environmental group is, has urged a lot of people to speak for a moratorium and not now any more building. And I'm just concerned that that small group, would it be imposing their will on the other 90% of the town?
And I think, Armon, your, your point of if we table this, we have to go back out and do a 56 notice. I think that might be, that might be a benefit that'll go to everybody affected and that might be the best way to get the word out that the council may take action this time. Please show up and express your opinion on the, on the topic. So another, another pro towards, towards tabling it.
If I can also add one, one thought here, the, the model ordinance as before you kind of combines two different components. One is the, the 2020 model ordinance that FEMA passed and then also the no net loss standards, which are to be in compliance with the pick 'em. So we also have, you know, going forward, we can also consider adopting the 2020 changes that would bring, bring up a lot of the aspects of our code that clarifies a lot of components. Have that without the, the no net loss component of the model ordinance.
Yeah. So it's blended in now. And I would agree with you. I would encourage city staff to pull that piece out and bring it back as a separate discussion. Update our zoning code to bring us into compliance to the historic actions taken independent, that were taken independent of the FEMA buyout. I think that's a, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, if I understand it correctly, we need to bring it back to planning commission and then go back to city council. So it would not be, you know, in the next two months, but it's definitely something we can put on the plate.
That's great. Well, how, how, how are other counselors feeling? Any sense that just tabling the whole thing at the beginning makes the most sense to you?
I mean, to me, it's wild that so many of the towns have gone to the permit by permit, but yet we're being told like, ugh. So I, I mean, it's just, I guess I'm just kind of confused. Like what is their logic behind going to, I mean, I don't know, just there's so many towns that are going to permit by permit.
When I saw the, on the maps, those are towns that didn't have all the wetlands.
They just have a handful.
Do we not have any comparable towns that have the amount of wetlands that we?
Warrenton.
Warrenton, yes.
And Warrenton is looking at a model.
But seaside, Cannon Beach, they don't have.
No. Manzanita, I think you said had like four building lots and that's it. And that affects. So it's easy for them to do a permit by permit.
But yeah, Telemok has a big chunk and, and they're looking at the model ordinance.
Yeah.
When I had the hardware store, I had to pay for the flood insurance. Roseland has to. Since citizens want to be upfront, want to know what's going on. So I think the word needs to go out.
Yeah.
And counselor, if I may, to that permit by permit question, like I mentioned, I would be very curious to see what planning is actually doing in those cities when they get an application affecting floodplain zone land. I would, I would venture to guess many of those planning departments are not imposing the new standards. So they say that they're in permit by permit review, but I will be highly suspect and doubtful that they're actually imposing the new regulations. That would be, that would, that's my assessment.
Your suspicion is that they're saying that they're permit by permit, but what's actually happening may not be what they're saying.
Yes, they are looking at them individually, but using the old standards.
Got it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and ultimately, just for everyone's calculation, a big risk assessment here that we just didn't even get into and we don't need to dive into it, but I'm analyzing this from a agency enforcement perspective versus an applicant challenge perspective. And my bigger concern for the city is an applicant challenge. And those challenges would come by enforcing regulations that are not under your code or enforcing this ordinance, which is technically not clear and objective. And in the state of Oregon, for housing development, we can only impose clear and objective standards. So that presents a whole nother issue and question with this ordinance about why a lot of cities are waiting on it because it's, it's, it's not the greatest language. So.
Yeah.
So my only other would just be if for some reason they decided to all of a sudden start enforcing, we would have essentially like a grace period to then get in compliance.
That's what their federal, that's how their federal regulations read, yes. I would, I would, I would venture, I haven't seen this yet again. I would venture they would probably start with an audit or a community review is what they call it. And so they reach out to the local planning department and say, hey, can I see all your applications you got that affected flood hazard area? They would look at that and they go, well, why did you approve this application? Why didn't you mitigate for this? You know, why didn't you do this? And then we would, working with me, we would provide them a response of where our position is. And then we would go through their CFRs, their regulations and yes, I'm reading a suspension period requires a notice, opportunity to cure. And so we would proceed through.
Okay.
There's risk. I, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish that risk. There is a risk here, but there's risks on both sides. This is not an easy decision.
So am I, am I sensing that we're comfortable just at the very beginning, tabling the public, the whole thing? And then doing some outreach into the community to.
Setting another measure 56.
Yeah.
To really get people engaged.
Yeah. And, and, and not setting a hard date, simply tabling it until we hear back from staff. When, when would make the most sense to begin moving forward.
Seems like a very prudent direction.
Anybody feel uncomfortable with that?
Not at all.
Mr. Weaver, if I can ask a quick question, with that, would you also like for us to split the?
Yes. And, and, and absolutely. We want to get the, the, the code updates that predate the whole and are outside of the whole pick 'em. I personally would love to have our code updated with that. I don't think anybody else would disagree.
Melissa or somebody, what does that look for, like for us downstairs when this comes up?
I think for staff, we're just looking for a motion to table. I think the directive is pretty clear. Armon, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, you just, yeah, you could, you could remove it from the agenda. You, I, I think a motion is better. That's clear direction. You just don't set it for a new hearing and so it's going to go away. If we don't continue it to a date time certain, then we can't pick it back up. So.
Yeah, I understand. The staff will provide us with a, a motion to use downstairs. Right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else for this?
No, thank you.
Nothing else going on.
Armon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right. Well, we're going to move on to our sewer rate study analysis and we've got our good guy from HDR and, and Public Works Director, Mary Erks.
Okay, everybody. I wanted to introduce Josiah. He's joining us. He's been doing our, our rate analysis, working really closely with the city for many months now while we try and come up with appropriate rates for where our sewer system really needs to be. So I'll hand it over to him. He's got a really nice presentation. If you have questions throughout it, feel free to interrupt us. Specific to how the rate analysis works or how it impacts the city, we'll both kind of tag team those questions, but feel free. Otherwise we'll take them at the end.
All right.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, so we wanted to go through the results as we have them now. We will then cover the next steps. There's a couple of alternatives that we have as part of the presentation. So I'll discuss those and we can highlight kind of those decision points that we need to make tonight. So we have a base case and then what we're calling a debt reserve scenario. So the sewer utility recently is paying off the debt service that we have. As part of that covenant, we had reserves set aside. And so that money is now available to be used for a number of different purposes. And so the debt reserve scenario would be utilizing those reserves to help smooth the transition of rates. So it would lessen that rate impact. However, long-term, that would result in less reserves available for capital. So we could use those reserves in instances such as catastrophic emergencies for capital replacement, future debt service or offsetting future debt service or paying for capital with cash. So the base case will result in a higher level of rates. We'll look at a five-year period of rates. However, the, the risks associated with that scenario, it would mitigate some of those risks by having the cash on hand. And then for the schedule, based on your input, we come back and have a hearing in December on the 10th. And then the rates are proposed to be effective in January of 2026. So a little history, we talked about this this summer at the rates 101 presentation, for those of you that remember. But we haven't adjusted rates in the city since 2009. And since then, looking at the CPI numbers, it's about a 50.4% cumulative increase in costs since then. And if we adjusted the current rates by that, we'll look at that comparison and, and what the rate study shows, but obviously it would be quite a bit higher. And that's at the CPI level. So what we often look at within the engineering world is the ENR CCI, which is the engineer, Engineering News Record Consumer Cost Index, or Construction Cost Index, excuse me. And what that does is it looks at the materials and supply labor costs related to construction of public utilities. And so when we see that, it's actually even higher than that CPI number, often averaging between four and a half and 5% for that index. And so again, we've seen those cost increases since 2009. And so we need to make up ground as part of the rate study. And so as we're conducting the rate study, we're looking to industry manual, the Water Environment Federation Manual of Practice, number 27 pictured here. What that does is it outlines how we think about accumulating costs for the sewer utility. We think about the O and M costs to operate the utility on a day-to-day basis. So the materials and supplies costs, the labor costs, utility costs, those kinds of things. We also want to look at running the system in a prudent way that keeps a high level of service. So that typically reflects our approach to capital funding. We want to make sure that we're adequately funding the renewal and replacement of existing assets as they lose useful life, as well as addressing any regulatory or growth-related capital projects that may come up. So by using this manual, we're using a structured approach. And we use this manual across the country when I do these studies. And so we can be assured that we're conducting the study in a similar way as other sewer utilities are across the country. We then tailor that to the specific engineering operations of the sewer utility, as well as the makeup of treatment processes and things like that. So some key inputs or considerations within the study, we have a flat customer growth that we've assumed. We're basing the beginning expenses on the 2026 budget. And then we escalate that forward based on inflationary factors so that we can keep pace with the increase in costs over the next five-year period. We utilized the capital funding program for 2026 through 35. There's approximately 2.2 million in projects that we're going to address. Majority of those here in 26. We have some funding through SDCs for those local improvements. And then we also have sprinkled in again, the renewal and replacement of the existing infrastructure and making sure that that operates appropriately. And then also maintaining those reserve levels. Again, we, we use that as a risk mitigation. We also need to make sure that we have reserves available for cash flow and a number of other purposes. So it's important to maintain those reserve levels. So here's a summary of our capital improvement plan by funding source. So again, in 2026, we're utilizing our existing reserves from SDCs. The improvement and the reimbursement components contributing to cover those costs. And then in 27 through 31, we have that darker blue shaded area. That is our contribution from rates to our sewer master plan reserve. And we utilize that as a funding source again to address those renewal and replacement projects that we have on the sewer system. So paying through those rates that we charge customers to cover that. So we're not anticipating any further long-term debt in either scenario. This is for the base case and for the debt reserve scenario where we utilize those reserves, it is the same chart. And we aren't having any differences there. We're not delaying any capital under either scenario. So the revenue requirement summary looks at those costs that we're accumulating and we need to identify funding for. The gray shaded area is our O and M expense, the materials and supplies, again, labor, utility costs, all of the day-to-day expenses that we have for the sewer utility. That blue shaded area is our taxes and transfers, which includes contributions to the general fund for shared costs as well as funding that sewer master plan reserve. So that is the component within rates that we're contributing to fund sewer capital on an annual basis. And that's a best practice from industry manuals that we want to continue. Under this base case, you can see that orange shaded area, that is our use of reserves when it's negative. So those first four years currently, based on the, the present rate level, we have more expenses than we can fund. And so that's why we have this mid-year adjustment in 26 to help us fund those into the future. So we have a, we're utilizing some of those reserves to help us transition over the, the period. And you'll see that dash line is our proposed rate revenue level to again, cover those costs. And then we start to build back those reserves in the last two years there. For the debt reserve scenario, that dashed line is not quite as steep, so it does result in lower annual rate adjustments. But the orange box is there, a use of reserves. We're utilizing. But the orange box is there, a use of reserves. We're utilizing about a half a million dollars of those debt reserves that are now available to help us for a number of different, in a number of different ways. But in this scenario, we're utilizing those to help us again, lower those rate adjustments. And so this was just another scenario. We thought we wanted impact from you all or input, excuse me, from you all to see your preference. I hit the loser. So what this looks like, I'll flip back and forth from a couple of these charts just to try to highlight the impact. This is under the base case. So that dark gray shaded area, that is our operating reserve. And that is in place to help us with cash flow fluctuations. The time between when the sewer utility expends money and then bills the customers. And then when we receive revenues as a multiple month period, so we need to have reserves available to handle that, those cash flows. We also have the the sewer master plan reserve. That's our capital reserve essentially. And then that blue shaded area, that is our debt reserve. And so under this base case, we don't touch that reserve. We have that there again, for a number of purposes, as the city may identify future capital projects, we could use that to help fund that from cash or the debt service related to those capital projects. So it gives us flexibility as well as again, mitigating any catastrophic failures that may happen within the sewer system. So under the debt reserve scenario, you'll see that blue shaded area gets much smaller. So in total, we have about $2 million at the end of the period on the debt reserve scenario. Utilizing those reserves, if I go back to the base case, we're up close to that two and a half million. And so you'll also see the operating reserve. We utilize that primarily for the smoothing of rates over the period. And under the debt reserve scenario, we're not relying on those reserves as much as we are the debt service reserves. So you'll see that dark gray shaded area slows, it doesn't have the smiley face, as I call it, on the other graph. So that's the primary difference between those two scenarios. When we look at impacts to rates under the base case, currently, this is a monthly comparison. Currently, that's $50.80 under the base case, which is a little bit higher rates than the debt reserve scenario. We would increase by $4.32 to 55.12 and then up to the last year would be $6 a month out in 2030. And under the debt reserve scenario, we'd increase to by $3.56 to 54.36. And you would get up to $70.26. And important to note here is when we looked at the current rate and adjusted it by the CPI, we were at $76. So that would bring us up just inflation from 2009 to the current year. And we wouldn't hit that even under the higher scenario until the last year of this. And so, you know, that's just important to note as we go through this. So then in the rate design, what we're trying to accomplish is we've identified the total cost of the sewer utility. We're then designing rates to produce that amount of revenue contribution from the customers. And we can incorporate any policy considerations that staff and the council may have as we design those rates. As we went through the rate study process, we are maintaining the current structure. We did evaluate some different permutations and looking at different components of the structure. One was billing by class, so having a different cost on that rate for commercial. But given the overwhelming majority of the city's customers are residential, we didn't see that that was an option to go through, as well as the short term rental differential on their rate. And there's a lot of communities I work with looking at this. There is, it's not a significant difference between the customers where we see the differences on the volume contributions. But that is only a small piece of the total cost drivers. What we do, a cost of service, and we look at the components of your sewer system related to volume, so the amount of wastewater that you treat, as well as strength and the customer costs. And so when we looked at that and showed staff, we didn't see a significant difference in that rate. We didn't think it warranted bringing that forward. So in both scenarios, we maintain the current rate structure, which is a flat fixed charge on a bi monthly basis. And this lays out the the rate by component. So we have the sewer base, the sewer master plan, so that's our capital contribution, and then the sewer debt. And so under the proposed rates, that that debt component is going away and getting wrapped up into our sewer base fee. And then that and the sewer master plan components are being adjusted by the overall revenue rate adjustment level over the five year period to try to again, get that contribution of revenue that we need to address our costs. And if we don't adjust rates to those levels, if you remember back to those charts, and maybe I can flip up to them quickly. We will need to get rid of expenses in order to stay at that solid line. The dash line is our proposed revenue. So then staff would need to work through how how we can accomplish that. Because again, as costs increase, we wouldn't be able to, you know, cover all the costs that we've identified. So when we look at these, the the impacts between the two scenarios, the base case is in dark gray. You can see it's under a dollar difference in that first year and then we move out to the last year. We're about $5 almost difference between the two. And again, the the decision comes down to mainly risk mitigation, you know, do we think it's more important to have the reserves and cash on hand, or do we want to have that lower rate impact customers? When we look at, yeah, when we look at the rates compared to other local jurisdictions, you know, we're still pretty far down on the list. Now, it's important to know there can be big differences, obviously, between systems, the treatment process that each utility has can, you know, plays into the cost as well as the number of customers. Also, the amount of or the how recent a rate study has been conducted can play into that. Typically, we see with larger cities, they're often doing rate increases more frequently. And so they may have a higher rate level. So this doesn't necessarily tell the whole picture. However, I think the city under either proposed scenario would still be pretty far down the list in comparison with other local jurisdictions. So there was some significant outreach efforts. So flyers were sent out twice in September and then in October. The website has a landing page that is linked from the homepage and it has all of the flyers that were sent out. This is one of them that was sent out. And so staff really did a good job trying to get the word out and get people educated on the process as well as what we're considering, some of the goals. Because as you can imagine and have seen, there's a lot of moving pieces. And so we tried to get out ahead of this, having the Rates 101 presentation this summer as well to start that discussion and try to prime the board and the community for what we are trying to accomplish with the sewer rate study. And so with that all, bring it back to the council here for feedback and input on the alternatives. Once we have that, we will finalize the technical analysis. We'll put together the written report with the selected alternative and then come back in December for the public hearing. And again, those rates would be ideally implemented January 1st of 2026. And I'm happy to go back to any other slides as well.
Just one comment for the council and and a great job, by the way, this is really very, very informative. The government shut down. People are struggling. We want to think about timing. Is 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 now the time to raise rates in January? Just throwing it out that maybe we sort of wait till the government and it reopens, things get settled down.
I feel like it's a, it's a lot. I mean, government shutdown aside, as a single mom, like I'm thinking about like we're coming out of the holiday, like I just feel like it's, it's a lot to hit people with. The government shutdown, the holidays, the winter time, you know, I think it's just, I think it's a whole picture.
Just, that's that that may be what the council wants to do. I just, just a reminder, February would be it's a two month billing cycle. So the bills will go out into February through any rate change that takes place beginning of January. So March, March is when we'd see, they'd see these these changes.
Did we get much feedback from the public on this?
Three emails.
And those those flyers went to every.
Every person who receives a super bill receives that flyer.
It was excellent outreach.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know the outreach was beautiful, but I was just wondering what the feedback was.
I haven't had anyone talk to me and I'm out in the community a lot.
Yeah, I haven't had anybody.
Just my wife. Go ahead, go ahead, counsel.
Most people recognize that inflation costs are going, things are going up and that it's just inevitable that the city has to keep up with that at some point, I think. But but I actually got, I don't know, I haven't, like I said, I haven't received any comments from people.
I mean, I'm sure we'll, we'll get some.
I remember years ago, we raised, raised $5 a month. And the council chambers was packed with all the brothers just complaining about that $10 every other month raised. And so we didn't expect to have a crowd.
Mm hmm. That's what I'm saying, like.
But it has to.
The systems have to be maintained.
I think if we put the premise on how long it's been since we have done this, that people are going to realize, I mean, after all, groceries have gone up 50%.
So one, one scenario, the rates go up less. It comes with some risk. Could you give us a little bit more about the risk the city runs by going with the the debt reserve lower increase scenario?
Yeah, so we use about half a million dollars of that reserve. So it's currently right around a million dollars. And so again, the the risk would primarily be on the capital side. So either a catastrophic emergency for a sewer utility of a mile of pipe is what a couple million bucks now. So so decreasing that, yeah.
Our system is old. Like I tried to really highlight that in the outreach that we did, built mainly in the 50s, updated in the 80s. And it hasn't really been touched since then. If you're, if you're all interested in ever checking out the sewer system, we'd be happy to give you a tour. It's actually really fascinating how the system's held on as well as it has. But it has needs, like our Fourth Street List Station needs updates. It needs new pumps. It needs improvements for safety. There are, there are real needs for the sewer system. Our guys work really hard, but we run super lean at Public Works. Like we have six guys, like it is unheard of for a city of our size, any amount of projects we do to have such little staff. So a lot of the rate increase that we're looking at will go to support staff. And we do have positions that are open that need to be filled. But there's not that we can't do all of those things with the lesser increase, but it does leave us open for more potential.
Well, and I think it's also important when you say there's only six, currently six staff members. They're working on a lot more than just the sewer.
Oh, absolutely.
And, yeah.
Well, we're we're on borrowed time in some of these things, the age, the age of the the system itself or or the plant. The age of the system, both and sooner or later, there's going to be a compromise there and it's going to be a big bill. And so one scenario showed four years of using some of that reserve and the other was six years used to be. So we're looking at 350,000 to a half a million, depending upon what's where we go. And personally, I would like to leave that money where it's at because it's just a matter of time before we're going to have to tap into it. If it's deferred, even if it's deferred maintenance, the job is to prevent not solve. The solving is much more expensive.
And you're looking for us to sort of pull us around one of the two options.
Yeah, that would be our goal. The next piece of public outreach that I would like to send out is this is what the proposed rates look like. So when it comes to the public hearing, the public will have an idea before they, before the hearing happens of like what the rates are going to look like. And while it's not like a pretty picture, instead of taking the money that we used to for our loan payment, that means going actually up into the general cost that we have. So the rate increase that we are realistically looking at is like a $30 increase. But because the city set a really good job of paying off its debt and not needing to take on additional debt, it's a $5 increase. So the timing works out really nice for the public because if not for that, we'd be looking at a huge increase that we need to take on.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think there be, needs to be some real emphasis on the stewardship.
Well, I don't vote, but if I did vote, I'd vote for the one that keeps the reserves where it is. I'm on Council Ryan's team.
So so there was the base scenario that we don't touch any of those reserves. And it's about a $5 a month on the average increase over six years.
If I did the math correctly, at the end of the five years, there's a $4 gap in in the in the two.
Yes.
So if we can't reserve.
Yeah, so every dollar impacts people and don't want to discount that.
But I don't think the gap, saving that gap warrants the risk we undertake by starting to suck money out of the reserve.
And I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity lately to to tour the sewer plant, but I've taken a couple tours on it within the last couple of years. And each time Dan Emerson took me around and each time he would point out, this is on its last leg, this is on its last leg, this is on its last leg. So if you get that opportunity to go tour, please do that. And it and it gives a good visual of what kind of decision we need to make.
And ask me about the 12th station, 12th Street Pump Station that services Lake Lidle. It's special. So they're all special. And I I did the tour and it's a phenomenal, it really, I think more about water and sewer than I've ever thought about it in my life. So, so the base case leaves reserves alone, little bit of uptick. So do we have a a recoalescing around the base case?
That is definitely the direction I would be going.
And and based on my tours with Dan, I think leaving the reserves alone is a good choice because there is going to be a big fix, some big fixes coming up.
I mean, I think ultimately this comes down to for the the bulk of us here, I mean, do we want our bills to go up? No. I mean, we're living in this world too, world, this world is expensive. But again, this is where you have to take a step back and you have to say, but it's not about what's best for me and my bank account. It's what's best for the city. And we don't know what's going to happen. And, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, when you look at that tiny gap between the two, you know, and the fact that we could be leaving ourselves in what could potentially be big trouble. I mean, I think the smarter decision here is.
And we are rolling out a program to help people. We all keep in mind, we are, what the city is not, you know, snidey whiplash, it's really thinking about the residents and the impact and they're rolling out a program to help those that have a, that this is going to be really challenging for them. And I applaud our city leadership for for putting that forward.
Finance Director Johnson and Representative Care will be here at your next workshop to talk about the financial assistance program.
You know, as someone who works with the public in my day to day career. You know, as someone who works with the public in my day to day career. You know, I am seeing a big upswing in people that just, you know, they don't need a handout, they just need a little hand up. And so the fact that we're gonna be able to offer something like that or assist in something like that, to me is huge. Because when you're dealing with, you know, seniors who are on very fixed incomes. You know, to, to the bulk of the public, five dollars is a cup of coffee or six dollars is a cup of coffee. But to someone who's living on an extremely fixed income, that can be detrimental to them. That can be the difference between, you know, them eating a meal or two or three.
So are we uh, good with moving forward with the base case? That's the one, we'll keep the reserves, I'm seeing nod and shit, but, okay, I think you got your answer.
Those are like really poor decisions we'll have to make, um, but, um, it's the right choice for the city. Everybody needs their utilities, so, um. Well, it's wild to me that that hasn't been adjusted in, I mean, almost twenty years, like that's crazy.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. You manage a shepherdy, did you wanna do any of your strategic plan?
Yeah, I, we have a little bit of time, I'll, I'll go very quick, we might skip ahead to, uh.
Well.
So I'm gonna go very, very quickly, I, I just, fate has something against this presentation. I've already shortened up the presentation from what you were gonna achieve the last, kept from the last, uh. The last workshop, I think it's down to three slides. Um, but uh, I guess as consolation, you do have a, a table in your, in your packets, color coded. You have all forty seven goal action items we're working on, um, and uh, it's the Q one update, the first quarter. Um, um, that will pick up, we've had a, a full, a full quarter of the, of the first budget that's been designed around. Uh, tackling some of these uh, goals, some of the strategic funds and, um. There we go. Okay, so, so really quickly here, uh, there are forty seven goal action items, they're color coded, um. Uh, dark green is complete, light green's in progress and no action has been taken on those, those that are white.
That's our message.
Yeah, but it's great to see that, um, even though it's just the first quarter, first quarter of a five year plan, uh, twenty five percent are in that complete category. Overall though, eighty five percent uh, have been worked on, six percent are still being in, in progress. Um, so not too bad, um, and we've got some highlights. Um, uh, which you can just take a look and read there, I have some details on all of those. Um, but we just don't have the time tonight, David's Chair Recycling Program, we found the funding for Jenny Creek. Wonderful job promoting our business grants, uh, we've got millions of dollars in state funding in this year's budget. Um, both grants and forgivable loans, loan to straight government loan, uh, we've attracted a ton of businesses to Rockaway Beach. Um, and the mitigation, uh, the flood mitigation projects have been working. I don't know if anybody knows, but uh, last week we had an atmospheric river and a king tide and there was no flooding down there. And uh, in any other year, that would have been big trouble, um, but it was dry. So not a silver bullet, but, but we're working.
That was really nice for the homeowners that live in that area.
Yeah, I, I can only imagine. Um, so this is what I wanted to get to tonight, since we're so short on time. We are, we are, we do have some challenges, of course. Uh, number one is the state and federal uh, funding freeze, mostly a federal funding freeze, freeze. We're already seeing that affect state level funding, um, so things like the uh, transportation plan, there's no funding for that. You know, the Seven Berry Trail, uh, we're gonna struggle to find funding for that years to come. Um, and then funding for the full blown high ground project, uh, from, from the federal government, that, that's not gonna be available. Although as a side note, we are working on a, a, uh, 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 very specific phase one budget friendly, just fire department. And we'll have more on that to share, uh, as the months go on. Um, uh, I think I sent you an email, uh, we lost our, our fourth deputy we had. Um, staffing issues in the fire department continues to see increasing demand. Um, but the two down here at the bottom that I wanna talk about most, uh, number one is the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association Reorganization. Nan, Nan told us about that, uh, previously at one of her meetings. And there's a bunch of items, um, in our strategic plan that ECVA was gonna work on for us, Dan was gonna work on it, went with this. So I'm, I'm gonna work with TCVA here, uh, towards the end of this week. They started to set up talks to cover, uh, some of the short term to midterm, um, issues we're gonna see with, with, um, with that reorganization. But, but long term, um, I don't know what the answer is. We're gonna have to start answering questions about what are we gonna, what are we doing long term? Uh, with destination management services in Rockaway Beach. Uh, it could be that you need to go out and your services. Um, so I just want the council to be, be aware of that.
Yeah, so if I can, if I can just jump in on that, cause I think, so, uh, for those of you who have, have read our comprehensive plan. Um, on page nine, um, and this, I, I, when this was originally written, this goes way, way back. Um, we had a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to do our marketing. Uh, and so there are two references on page nine, um, number four and number five. That reference the Chamber of Commerce. Um, subsequent to this comprehensive plan being written and approved. Um, at the October twelfth, twenty sixteen regular meeting. Council unanimously approved the contract for advertising services between the city and Tillamook Coast. And at that time, it was for fiscal year twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. So, um, on that date, at that meeting, the council made a decision to move away from the chamber. And work with Tillamook Coast, which evolved into Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. And the council, including our council, has regularly renewed those contracts with them, further cementing. And then, um, um, at the March eighth, twenty seventeen regular meeting. Council unanimously approved Resolution number seventeen six fifty, a resolution proclaiming. Visit rockawaybeach.org as the city's official tourism website address. And again, that's a Tillamook Coast Visitors Association, um, created and supported. Um, I worked very, actually I worked very closely with, with uh, Nan Devlin on that. And our QR code program is, is tied into that, so. But I, I mentioned that as another example of how the city is, is now very much focused on using Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. So I recommend that we modify our comprehensive plan. And remove the connection between the city and the chamber, uh, because it no longer exists. And isn't, is, is a, is an outdated reference. We also have three organizations now in town that promote our community. We have the chamber, we have the business association, and we have Go Rockaway. So I also think it's inappropriate to sort of focus on one to the exclusion of, of the other two. Um, so there's uh, very simple edits that can be made to that number four and number five. There's a process that has to go through it, there's a notification to the LCD, there's the planning commission, back to city council. But I, I would encourage the council tonight to, to direct, uh, the city staff to move forward with updating page nine. Items four and five to remove the chamber's reference from it. Any question?
No, no, I, I agree with uh, what you said there because, uh, it, the chamber is a private nonprofit. Small private nonprofit, and it, it seems to me like that's discrimination, otherwise. You know, we need, we either need to support all of our small nonprofits or none of them. We need to be equal across the board with this support.
Well, selfishly for me, TCVA has a much broader reach than any of these three. Or these three combined are gonna ever, ever give to, uh, the promoting of Rockaway Beach. And I mean, we, we've seen the results.
Yeah.
That comes from that, so.
Well, I don't think it's anything against our three small nonprofits, they just don't have the bandwidth that TCVA has.
They have a local focus.
Yeah.
What they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've gotten good, great results from TCVA. There's obviously some things all of us would like to see enhanced, um, and I think that's probably true of any marketing organization.
Um, yeah, we sign a year to year contract with TCVA.
Yeah, we have a, we have a five year agreement, it's up, it's up mid, mid twenty six. And I, I think, I think the point with the comp plan is, or a comp plan kind of mandated who, who the city's supposed to be working with. Um, that's not, that's not a fair business practice, does, doesn't ensure fair competition, um, never, never seen anything like that.
Yeah.
Well, uh, some cities, small, even small cities in Oregon, um, will put their marketing grant up for bids. And they'll have three or four different marketing organizations bid on it. It's just really. I mean, we've had great success with TCVA, uh, but it's, but even those or, even those uh, towns in Oregon. That, uh, put it up for bids, they don't have it in their comprehensive plan. It's just a policy they have or, or a resolution they make.
So are we comfortable directing staff to work to remove, uh, focus directed connection to the chamber?
We'll, we'll kick off the, the process and, uh, on that one. Yeah, we're, we're, we really are out of time. The last thing I was gonna bring up is, uh, we are out of parking. Um, just to be sure, we're, we're out of parking, parking is at capacity, we can't support the businesses we already have that have moved in since, since we developed this strategic plan. Um, so I'm proposing instead of spending money on another economic development plan. We instead focus that in the practical ways to get parking improvements and parking expansion in our downtown area. That was the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight.
Everybody is comfortable with that? Okay, all right.
About the, the wayside use permits, um, can we, is, can that, uh, be a motion to table that till next month?
Would you like to see that at a workshop and not a regular session?
Yeah, we need to, we need to come back, needs to come back to a workshop. Cause parking is a big part of our discussion.
Yeah, we, we had great presentations today, but there's a couple that I'd like to flesh out a little bit more, like the parking and the wayside applications.
We can make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and just don't forget to look at my full picture.
It's a great picture.
Demonstrates parking challenges in our, in our, uh, in our city.
And they'll have to take that?
No, I took it.
Oh, you took.
May go down in history.
It may go down in history, thank you, all right.
But that's a better picture than some of the history pictures.
All right, all right, may I, uh, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Make a motion that we adjourn, uh, the workshop.
Second?
Second, the motion.
Moved and seconded, let's vote. Uh, Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Uh, Council Conriff.
Yes.
Council Martinin.
Yes.
Council McGinnis.
Yes.
Council Ryan.
Yes.
Um, we are adjourned, the motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at five fifty two. On Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five.